Okay, we'll call a meeting to order at 6:32. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
George Colas.
Yes.
Karen Winchester.
Yes.
Mark Freeman.
Mark's here.
Yes.
There you go.
Pat Feeney.
We're looking at it.
Here.
Steve Ruth.
Here.
Okay, consent agenda?
I would move to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Support. Moved by Clerk Winchester, support by Trustee Ruth, to approve the consent agenda. Roll call, please.
Steve Ruth.
Yes.
Pat Feeney.
Yes.
Mark Freeman.
Yes.
Karen Winchester.
Yes.
George Colas.
Yes. Motion carries. Uh, we don't have a public, oh, yeah, we don't have a public hearing, we don't have a presentation. Reports, uh-huh. I went with Mr. Feeney last time, I'll start with Mr. Ruth.
Uh, nothing for me.
Now with Mr. Feeney.
Uh, okay, Planning Commission, we are still working on the ordinance for, um, lack of a better term, 'cause it's mostly been about it, we'll call it the Chicken Ordinance. We're still discussing it. Hopefully, by next meeting, we'll have it to you. And that's about it.
That's it, alright. And, uh, we'll go to the Treasurer.
Uh, no report.
And we'll, the Clerk?
No report.
Okay, Supervisor, I've met with, um, the architect and contractor for the barn project, along with the gentleman from the steel fabricating company that's dealing with the beams, the understructure of the barn today, and they are moving along, and everybody seems to be on the same page. They got a couple of weeks out to buy, um, the additional steel that's needed. The steel that was ordered, um, wrong, if you remember, it was fifteen gauge versus eighteen. They're gonna be taking the fifteens, cutting them and using them for the smaller pieces, and then they'll order the eight, the couple of eighteens that they need, and, uh, but we seem to be on target, moving along on that. We've, we've had a setback with the cold weather and so forth, so none of that was done, but that meeting was held today, so that went well. Um, I was trying to think, there were two things I was gonna, I'm gonna talk about, and I, I'm at a loss, if I come up with later, I guess I'll mention it. Do you, Amy didn't remember where I was?
Um, I did get a call back from, or an email back from Jerry Hicks, and he said that May is filled up as far as their Saturday dates for the cleanup, so we should, um, would probably consider June. Unless we wanna go earlier.
I did have a question. Where are we at with the appraisal of the Township Hall?
Well, let's finish with this and, um, okay, yeah, so we've been working on the spring and fall dates for the cleanup, and we got them cleared. We're not gonna be able to make a decision tonight, 'cause I'm gonna have to go back to Jeremy Lent to get this clarified, um, so that we make sure we're not conflicting dates with people. All of his May is full. Is that what I heard you say?
All of his May is full, yeah.
Okay.
And it seems that on Facebook, we've got a pretty good, uh, response as far as, uh-
That was the other thing.
Shredding, yeah.
That was, I knew there was a second thing. Uh, I posted on Facebook, we've talked to a couple of contractors regarding the spring cleanup. It's gonna be a little different this year. Um, I've, I've got one company that wants to come out and do salvaging for the, the appliances and the bigger metal stuff, and we're working with them. And, and when I bring these extra companies, and the good news is, we won't have to pay as much for the, the other trash, because we won't fill up as many trucks, so we're trying to, the whole idea behind this is to try to bring the cost down. Um, we've also made a deal with a tire, uh, company, and I think it'll be less expensive for us than the big forty-yard dumpster that we have to pay for the delivery, the pickup, to emptying it and all of that stuff, so, um, we're working on that. The other thing that we were looking at, we've had a few people ask if we had, um, paper shredding. And we've talked to a couple of companies, so what I did was, I put it out on Facebook, and I said, Holly Township's looking at spring cleanup, if we were to have paper shredding, um, you know, would you be interested in being able to bring stuff to get it shredded? And I think we were kinda surprised at the response we got, there were so many people. Uh, one person even said, "I have a lot of it, even if I have to pay for it." So, we were kinda surprised like that, so we're looking at that as well.
Shredding for security reasons, you mean?
Yeah.
Geez, I wouldn't think it was that, that big a deal.
Uh, we were surprised how many people, 'cause we had a company call us, we talked about it, and I, I figured the best way to find out is throw it on Facebook and see if we get any feedback, and it took off. So, we will, we will look at that and come back to you next month with something on, on that.
Amy, did it mention, was it last weekend in April, okay? Just before we get to that point?
Um, he was saying he could take a look at the April dates, whereas if June was too far into the summer.
Yeah, it's kinda-
Or, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I just-
Last weekend in April.
First week of June's not really spring cleanup, is it?
No, we're getting to summer, a few, few weeks from the longest day of the year.
We'll, we'll take a look at it and bring something back. I was hoping to have something tonight, but we weren't able to put those things together, so, um, we'll look at that. Um, now, let's go ahead and move on to, uh, public comment.
Uh, no, George.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A question about the appraisal for the Township Hall, we, where are we at with that?
Um, we got an appraisal in, um, we are currently reviewing that, we met with, uh, another company on that appraisal, and, uh, when we have more information, we'll bring it forward.
Right.
Okay. Now, let's go into public comment on Agenda items only. Members of the public can address the Board on Agenda items only. Once recognized by the Supervisor, comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes. The Board may extend this time by a majority vote. Prior to addressing, the Board members of the public shall state their name and address for the record. A second, a second public comment is available after new business for all other comments. Thank you for your cooperation. Do we have anybody for public comment? None, uh, peeling? Is that Stacy Taylor? No?
I don't know.
Oh. Okay. Alright, then we will move on to, uh, old business, which we have none. We will go into new business, the 2019 Planning Commission work plan. Is that something you wanna present?
Well, uh, as our, uh, beginning of the year and end of the year kind of, uh, brought together, so, some of the, what you'll see in our planning here, some of the accomplishments of last year, and some of the goals set out for, uh, this coming year. A couple of new things I think you might see on there that you hadn't talked about was up in the Northwest Corner. We're, um, looking at, uh, up near, on, um, Dixie Highway. That's something that we're thinking, taking a look at and seeing what we can come up with, development ideas and plans for the future. I know, um, it's a hot topic with, uh, along the rest of it, with Springfield Township and everything, and plus with our, uh, I guess pending, uh, with Shannon with the industrial park and that, up in that area too, so that's something that I think is, uh, new on there. Um, I think it was a pretty thorough job by our planner, and I think, I don't know if you had any questions on it. We have Tony here, if you had anything that, uh, saw on there.
We had him add, um, estimates so that it could go to the Board for us at budget time.
Oh, that's true.
At budget time.
Right, budget time, correct, yes, it is broken down, so, the different projects on there that, you know, when we do come up to budget time, we will have figures, you know, exact figures they gave us for each of the projects there, which I think would be helpful, you know, prioritizing.
Yeah, to discuss which ones the Board would consider and-
Right. Which I think is a real big help, having the dollar amount there, that way, you know, it's not one of those, uh, surprise at the end there, so that is something that-
Okay, I will tell you, in relationship to the Northwest Corner, um, I spoke with, uh, Justin from Rowe Engineering and Planning. They are the ones that are overseeing the, uh, water district that we're working on up in there, and we have another meeting on that coming up, as they have the plans kinda laid out. We'll be reviewing those next week, and I also have a meeting with Oakland County on Friday, um, regarding the Dixie Highway grade improvement overlay plan there. I've been in conversation with both Bob DePalma and, uh, Colin from Springfield Township, and looking at creating perhaps some ordinances to protect that natural beauty of that corridor, and at that point, it'll be something we'll wanna bring to the Planning Commission and to the Board, because the three townships need to be in sync on that stretch of the road, so, as that develops, I'll bring that information back.
I'd just like to add, to have, uh, Planner add, matching the zoning designations in the master plan to our zoning, because now that the names have changed in the master plan, you can't, when somebody, a developer comes in and looks at it, we don't have any definitions of what those new designations are, like in, we have in the zoning, you know, minimum five acres, we don't have that named in the master, or in the zoning.
In the master plan or in the ordinance?
In the zoning.
Oh, okay.
And then to change the H-E-R-E, minimum five acres, everybody thinks that means it's agricultural property, and they can get exemptions, and it's very confusing, and it's ongoing, it's a regular thing. I would like them to go and change all of the H-E-R-E to whatever it is in the master plan. I think it's rural, rural, everything needs to-
So, in other words, someone could look at the master plan instead of going two different places or being, having to-
Or having to ask for-
Or at least have them match.
Right, right, matching, right.
They need to match.
And, and it doesn't have to look like it's agricultural zoning, 'cause it's not.
Well, we had talked about setting up a meeting with John, and perhaps if I can set up a meeting, and Tony and us and sit down and talk about that, if, Pat, if you're available.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's definitely a good idea.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, next on, on, were there any other comments? Okay, so, uh, next on in the new business is the proposed code, Proposed Code of Ordinance Amendment, Chapter thirty-two zoning, Article five, environmental regulations. This has to do with the wellhead protection order.
This was approved by the Planning Commission in, um, June of seventeen, and somehow, it did not get forwarded for what was recommended to the Board, but we never, uh, addressed it. So, I went through and, and looked at what was codified and what has been passed as a, you know, to make sure everything was up to date, and this is one that was missed.
Was there anything in there, you know, being with the zoning, that you saw, any questions on the wellhead? 'Cause that was the only question I had with the language, um, because, um, Tony, correct me if I'm wrong, but at the time, what I remember when it was brought up, pretty much, you know, I, uh, the idea was, uh, we used pretty much an overlay from where other places had done it, you know, there wasn't any, uh, real, um, unique things with us per se. The only, I think at the time, the only question was, uh, over near Shannon, but I think we addressed that at the time, how, so we didn't interfere with them and that, but, uh, it was pretty straightforward on the issue, you know, terminology, um, and all that, there's nothing in there that was really adjusted too much from that, when we uncovered that. When I went back through my notes, didn't seem to be, uh, anything in there that anybody had any great concerns about either, when we were speaking, you know, ideas or on it, so, I don't know if anybody's seen anything in there that you might question on there, but, uh, pretty much, it was pretty standard.
Any other comments?
Nope.
So, we need a motion?
I'd move to approve Proposed Code of Ordinance Amendment, Chapter thirty-two zoning, Article five, environmental regulations, add section, uh, wellhead protection ordinance.
So, motion by Clerk Winchester, support by Trustee Feeney, to approve the Proposed Code of Ordinance Amendment, Chapter thirty-two zoning, Article five, environmental regulations, add the section, wellhead protection ordinance. Any further discussion? None appearing, a roll call?
Mark Freeman.
Yes.
Pat Feeney.
Yes.
Karen Winchester.
Yes.
Steve Ruth.
Yes.
George Colas.
Yes. Motion carries. Item three in our new business, the 2019 Dust Control Program with Oakland County. You have the papers on that?
Me too.
Well, oh, they're in here, but I, I gave you the contracts, okay.
Oh, yeah. So, it appears that it's not going up at all.
Nope, there's no entry.
Which is nice. I think it's went up the last couple of years.
And we had covered that same amount in the budget, or it added?
Mm-hmm.
And now, now that the, no rules or anything have changed from previous years or anything, so.
The, the one thing that I thought was odd was, if we, the cost for four applications is $452, is that?
This is for, uh, that's separate, this is for, um, residents, individual homes that want a contract.
So, that $452 is, is the cost, not per, per application, but for all four?
For, no, for, for people, individual homes that want to, um, contract. So, people can, if, if-
I know, but for an, I understand it's for individual home.
Yeah, oh, okay.
But if they get four apps, do they pay $452 for each app, or is that $452 for the four?
No, annual, $452 for four, right.
That's, that's what I was asking. Do we have a total cost for this contract? $4,563 and-
No, it's the village.
No, you're right.
Yeah, that's the village.
What did they, oh, here's.
Seventy-three, two thirty-four thirteen, if you go with five applications, which we've always needed.
Yeah, the $4,563.68 is the... Yeah, that's the village up there, so they're-
I would move to approve the 2019 Dust Control Program with five applications.
So, we have a motion by Clerk Winchester, support by Treasurer Freeman, to approve the 2019 Dust Control Program. Roll call, please.
Pat Feeney.
Yes.
Steve Ruth.
Yes.
George Colas.
Yes.
Karen Winchester.
Yes.
Mark Freeman.
Okay, uh, number four, Holly Area Youth Assistant Member, Proposed Resolution 2019-01. Karen?
Oh, George. I, they just sent this to me, so, I, yeah.
It's in with last year.
So, what they're asking us to do is approve Michelle Kidd-
Yeah, yes.
-for their Board?
Mm-hmm.
So, apparently, each of the townships has to give their approval when they do that?
That's correct.
So, if it's, okay.
Sorry, I wasn't sure what you meant.
That's okay. So, motion to approve the, uh, Resolution 2019-01, uh, putting Michelle Kidd on the Board for the Holly Area Youth Assistance. Is there support? Support, uh, motion by Supervisor Colas, support by Clerk Winchester, um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Recognition of Service, Proposed Resolution 2019-02. Did you wanna introduce that, Pat?
Well, this is for the, um, recognition for Ted Gurski for his service to the Planning Commission for a number, I don't know how many years, over a decade, I'd say?
At least.
At least a decade.
Yep, Ted, Ted Gurski was on the Board, unfortunately, he had mental, or not medical, I'm sorry, medical issues that he's no longer able to serve.
I just wanted to take the time to say that, you know, um, I think we really had a gem in Ted. Um, I have spoken to many people who served with him on the Planning Commission over the years and that, and frienderful on different issues, they all said that Ted was, you know, always made him feel welcome. Uh, he was an incredibly good leader on the Board. Um, I found myself, um, the first couple of meetings that Ted and I ended up at, uh, different ends on, uh, conversations on things, and, uh, but Ted never made me feel uncomfortable that I disagreed with him on something. Uh, that seems to be the general thread that anybody would tell you, is that, I mean, the perfect person you could have for a leadership position like that. He, uh, built consensus when it came down to it, and when he was passionate about something, he let you know, but, you know, you never felt like you were being lectured to, you, you knew you were listening to somebody who really, excuse me, believed in what he was saying, and he's gonna be greatly missed, and, you know, Ted, if you happen to see this, you know, we, you know, every meeting I think about you, and, uh, we come in and that, and it's because I always expect to, uh, hear your voice pop up in the middle of the conversation, 'cause I can almost imagine what you would have to say about different things, and you will be sorely missed.
Very good. Did you wanna follow that up with a motion?
Well, I, like, motion that we pass this resolution, and I'm thanking Ted for his years of service.
Support. So, it's motion by Trustee Feeney, support by Supervisor Colas, to approve Resolution 2019-02. Um, it just, I wanna read the one part, it says, "Whereas Holly Township Board of Trustees wishes to recognize and commend Ted Gurski for his years of service and dedication to our community, now therefore it be resolved that Holly Township Board of Trustees does recognize and commend Ted Gurski for his many years of service and dedication to our community." And, uh, it'll be adopted this day, the twentieth of 2019. It's a resolution, so if you'll do, roll call, please.
Karen Winchester.
Yes.
George Colas.
Yes.
Steve Ruth.
Yes.
Mark Freeman.
Yes.
Pat Feeney.
Yes.
Motion carries. Also, I can add to the end of this, um, the, at the Planning Commission meeting, uh, as we move forward with the Farmstead Project, we will be planting a tree up at the Farmstead and dedicate it to Ted as well, his years of service. So, uh, we will move on to, uh, number six, Proposed Budgets and Amendments. Uh, it's Proposed Resolution 2019-03. Karen?
Um, well, um, pretty much we, the budget amendments for, um, the Deputy Treasurer, um, coming in, we had to pay out, um, for the medical, um, vacation pay for, uh, Janice, uh, so that increased, uh, that line item, so I had to go through that, and then the, uh-
Because of the overlap of time.
The overlap of time, so it didn't, we budgeted just for what the salaries, what we had put for the wage and salaries, so we had to adjust that. And then, uh, Mark requested that his dues and, dues and subscriptions be moved to Suzanne's, so she could take the training, and then the Board approved an additional $2,000 for, uh, somebody to come in and train as well. So, those were the adjustments on that. Um, and then the Metro Act Fund, uh, those were the grant funds that needed to be used for the trees in the right of way at the Farmstead, so we had to transfer from the fund balance, because we didn't have that in the budget for the Metro Act Funds. And, um, amendments to the employees as follows, um, I think that's kind of self-explanatory, what my intent was, um, and the transfer of $266,584 as audited is to be going from the general fund checking to a new MERS trust for post-employment benefit plans, which is required by law now. And then it'll be fully funded, and then we would just do annual, um, uh, we have to do like an actuary, but annual deposits to that, and that will, that's really good. 'Cause a lot of the municipalities aren't fully funded, and we will be.
Say, I haven't heard "fully funded" used very much.
I know, so, yeah.
Okay, is there a motion?
No, discussion.
Just discussion.
Well, usually, we get a motion a second, and then I go for discussion. If you want discussion first, we can do that.
Why are we increasing the code enforcement officer assistant to the supervisor salary by $6,000? And whose idea was that? That's my first, this is my first.
Increasing the code enforcement after the last meeting we had and the conversation that we had in regards to the Deputy Treasurer and the Deputy Clerk, and the parity, uh, pay for experience, pay for out experience, uh, that salary increase brings it in line with the other two.
Since that was a, the, the salary that was given to somebody starting out with no experience was what the both Deputy Treasurer and the Deputy Clerk were making. And this is a full-time-
The Deputy Clerk and the Deputy Treasurer are appointed positions, and in the absence of the Clerk or the Treasurer, they actually serve as the Clerk and the Treasurer. The code enforcement officer assistant to the supervisor does not do that. They are not appointed, and they do not serve as the supervisor in the absence of the supervisor, so, I can see raising the salary, but not to the same level as a Deputy Treasurer or a Deputy Clerk.
They do far more than, just far more responsibility with the code enforcement.
What would your recommendation be? Um, half that, I'd go to $31,000 from the $28,000, I'd go $3,000 on it to $31,000. But I would, just so the Board knows, and I've, I think I've made this clear in the past, when we have our next, uh, budget workshop, I will be recommending some significant increases to both the Deputy Clerk Deputy Treasurer's position, and I'll give my reasons why at that time.
Well, I've been working on a pay, what do they call it, a pay?
Pay scale.
Pay scale, thank you. A pay scale for those positions as well. Um, if you wanna meet ahead of time and work on that and look at where we're at, we can do that going forward, because I think it's important that, as, as many townships have, that when you look at positions, there's usually an entry level, and pay scales usually say that that position pays between here and here, and we don't, we, up until now, we've not had that, but it was my intention to introduce that going forward. So, we can do it, we can meet for the first time at the budget meeting, we can meet ahead of time if you want, that's up to you, how we go forward with it.
But what you're talking about is hired positions, starting, start entry level hired positions, not appointed.
Which have been typically higher in pay than the deputies in the past.
You, you can set pay scales, I've looked at the other townships, they have pay scales for their deputies, it's, it's stated in their policy. Now, once that appointment comes in, then they look at that particular candidate, see where they fit in that place, but they aren't just a, a base salary, some are, some aren't. They're kind of all over the place, when you look at the different, um, the different pays, depending on where you're at, but I've got a culmination of those together, that we'll put together and we'll look at it to make the presentation when it comes budget time. So, I was just offering, if you wanted to work on that together, we can, we can work on it separately, bring it to the Board and go from there.
Mark, you were indicating that you're bringing something forward during the budget, that for the Deputy Treasurer and Deputy Clerk, those would be increased?
Right, because of the fact that I went through, just recently went through the process of interviewing.
Okay.
And, uh, based on the, um, level of qualified applicants, uh, that I was able to interview, uh, what, the big stumbling block was the starting rate of pay, it's less than $35,000.
It, it is a low, a low rate, even when you compare it to other townships through the county. So, that's what we're, that's what we're gonna address.
Right, and so, um, even at, as an example, the, the Clerk and the Treasurer each, and the Supervisor earn $59,000, let's just round it off to $60,000, okay? Because at the next budget session, they're probably gonna go to $60,000. So, even at $40,000, they'd still be making $20,000 less than the person they have to basically fill in for and s- less than the person they have to basically fill in for and serve as that position in the absence of the treasurer or the clerk. There still would be a $20,000 difference in the salary.
But vice, vice presidents and presidents always are different to them. But the vice president needs to step in if the president can.
I think per
But I'm saying $20,000 is a big difference. There's a big difference between 40 and 60. I'm just, and these are examples. I mean, this might even be too preliminary. I was going to wait till the budget workshop to go into it.
Yeah, I think
Because I don't have all my notes with me on that subject.
Right.
Because it wasn't actually on the agenda.
When you see what the other communities are paying, and Mark's right, when you're looking at bringing towns in, there's a competitive market out there. The village has gone through the same problem trying to get people over there. If you're not paying what they can get elsewhere.
Sure.
We've, we've even had that issue on Nakva. And Nakva's had a hard time keeping firemen and because they keep losing them to the bigger departments with the bigger pay. Doesn't mean we can naturally necessarily match the pay of a West Bloomfield or a Farmington or somebody, but we can get more in line with some of the townships across the northern part of the county.
Right. The second part of that is, is first you want to be able to attract qualified candidates when you do have an opening. The second part of that is, is that you want to be able to retain qualified people. Once they have achieved a certain amount of experience on the job, you don't want them to leave for a higher pay.
Right. No, that, and that was, that's what Nakva was having. They kept on training them and we became a training center. They were training here and going elsewhere at a cost of about $30,000 a year to train. So it was important.
The reason I brought that up is if, if those two positions increase, then we won't be on parity with, for the code enforcement officers. Is that okay? Or would that be a
We'll have to address that at budget. All of them are going to be addressed.
We'll address it when we get there.
Okay.
So I would make a motion to approve resolution 2019-03, the 2018-19 Holly Township budget appropriations and amendments.
Support.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm still, I'm still, I'm not satisfied with why, in the middle of a budget year, in fact, we're more than halfway through the budget year, we decided to increase the salary for just one position and it's a dramatic increase. It's a $6,000 increase.
You changed the entry level.
I didn't change anything. I hired a person based on what had been approved in the budget.
No, that's not the case.
This is some kind of retribution? Is that what you're telling me?
No, it is not.
Because that's what it appears like to me.
It can appear that way to you, but it's
Why wouldn't this be dealt with at the budget time since we are halfway through?
That's the point I'm trying to make.
That might be a sum of money that, not getting into the discussion merit one way or the other on it, but the position isn't being replaced. We haven't hired a new person. If we feel that at the budget time that that's something that we want to do to increase it by that amount, I think that would be the more appropriate time to do it. And that way we could also address the other salaries at the same time. Because in other words, you know, I mean, we're just going to, we have to have some process. And I think when it comes to it, it should be done at budget time. It shouldn't be done in the middle of the year. You know, that's, and like, my understanding was that the treasurer was basically money that was allocated for that position is what was paid for the new person. So thus we weren't increasing or decreasing. We were just approving the fact that we had a new person. Yeah, I would feel much better about it if we put that, what are we looking at, May for the budget?
It's July 1st.
Well, no, but
For budget talks.
Yeah, for the talks, you know, and, and we're talking about May coming up. And, you know, that's what, you know, we decide we want to go forward with that kind of increase, that's fine.
When is the budget?
Because I think it's such a bad precedence that someone else down the line, well, you know, we did a pay increase in the middle of the year this time, why don't we do it this time?
And we don't see more.
Well, I think it's more appropriate, considering the size of our township and our budget, that it's done, you know, at a budget hearing. That way, you know, you have input, you can, you know, you can, nobody can feel slighted because if other parties believe that, you know, they should be on par with other people in the township, they could bring that forward. I mean, if I'm reading this right, then that's basically, if this was approved, that the current code enforcement officer assistant to the supervisor is going to receive an additional $6,000 between now and June 30th. Isn't that correct?
No. No, that's a salary.
Per year divided by
It says by year.
Something about half.
Yes. And we're still in this fiscal year.
But we're half, you, you said it yourself, you're more than halfway through it. So it only works out to about
So are you saying the salary is going to stay the same from now till June 30th?
Correct.
It's not going to include this? This, this is not going to go in effect till July 1st?
No, this becomes the new, this becomes the new salary, but it's only, there's already been seven months. It's only the pay rate for the next four months, four months, four months.
So whatever you divide it and whatever the balance is left.
So one-third, so about $2,000 between now and July 1st.
And you have done this in the past, so you just pull out and, and do an increase in the I've been on the board 10 years. I don't remember changing any salaries in the middle of the year.
We did for your deputy treasurer. Janice.
Changed it in the middle of a year?
No.
She was, it was changed at, at a budget session.
I don't know.
Well, I'm
I see you two
The rest of the issue on here I have no problems with, but I think, I do believe that, I don't know how to hand, how you handle it, how you take it out of there, because the rest of this obviously needs to be approved.
Well, there's a motion on the table.
Yeah, well, you're right. Yeah, guess you call the question then, that would be.
Call the who?
Call the, sorry.
Courtney? Roll call, please.
Mark Freeman.
No.
Pat Feeney.
No.
Steve Ruth.
No.
George Cullis.
Yes.
Karen Winchester.
Yes.
Okay, so motion denied. We have public comment? This would be for any items, agenda or otherwise?
Well, we can take another, we can accept another motion.
Oh.
We have to approve the rest of it.
Right. Did you want to make another motion?
I'll make a motion that we, we approve resolution 2019-03, 2018-2019 Holly Township budget appropriations amendments. But with the, with changing the code enforcement officer assistant supervisor to $31,000 even rather than $34,818.
I'll support that.
Okay, so it's been moved by treasurer Freeman, support by trustee Winchester. So then I have to ask
Trustee Ruth.
I'm sorry. Trustee Ruth. I have to ask, I was looking at the W down here from the last one. Okay, so I have to ask the question now because you raised it before. That's a $3,000 increase.
It's basically half of what?
It's half of the, I want to understand.
But it's still, yeah, it's whatever, it's just the rate. Yeah.
But it's not $3,000 between now
No.
And July 1st, which is what you were saying the other one was.
As you clarified, you clarified that. I wanted to clarify if that, what was actually going to transpire.
Okay, yeah, no, that's not, so this is just like it was before. So you want to add yearly salary as we head it on here?
The annual salary of $31,000 rather than $34,818.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? Courtney, roll call, please.
Steve Ruth.
Yes.
Pat Feeney.
Yes.
Mark Freeman.
Yes.
Karen Winchester.
Yes.
George Cullis.
Yes. So motion carries.
Did you say $31,000 even or $31,818?
$31,000 even. I think what you heard Courtney was he said instead of, and then he said 34,000.
Okay.
Okay, we're back to public comment. I think Stacy was getting it.
Hello, how was everybody tonight?
Good evening.
Ooh, okay, first of all, Amy has been very helpful very often for me. She's had information when I've asked. She's been able to direct me to the right people. Don't have any idea about monies and all that, so that's your all's business. But I do want to say that she is very helpful and she has been able to direct me in the right direction at times, as well as a lot of people here have been very wonderful. So I had a chance to work for, oh, I'm sorry, Stacy Taylor, 15566 Falk Road. Okay, so I had a, about a 10-day break where I could work on some longer reports. So never brought this one up for you, but runoff. I live, basically, there's a seasonal pond right there at the Falk in the Northeastman is what they call it. So that's the road that goes down to Rice Lake, which used to be accessed by the dump for getting in there from the south, or the north end. Anyways, the minor property, Homestead Development, is a major tributary to stormwater and melt water runoff. During normal precipitation events, effectively all of the rainfall is absorbed into the ground on the minor site for the observed conditions. This suggests that at least a portion of the soils on the site are sufficiently permeable and permeate rapid infiltration into the subsoils. This is partially substantiated by the USDA mapping that indicates sandy soils in the collection area immediately east of the culvert past under Falk Road. It is further substantiated by the conditions disclosed by the test boring six and seven, plus a series of test holes excavated on the southeast section of the site. Continues on a little bit, the fall of, the thaw of 1994. Essentially, all of the fall, the flow was generated in the field east of Falk Road. So there's some flooding issues at that time. I have video in 2012. It is a river and not just a little river. My daffodils that are eight to 10 inches tall were barely visible and my dog wouldn't cross it. It's kind of funny to watch, but I've been videotaping them. We've had it probably happened four times. One time to the point, our neighbors, two houses down, actually three, because you go across the old abandoned sheep farm, they literally had to run a generator 24 hours a day for almost two weeks straight to control that flooding. If we clear cut that forest across the street, 194 acres, that is only going to increase that type of runoff. The continue, the report continues to go on, sorry, feeling very slow today, is understood that the vacant farmland on, okay, control of runoff, it's part 10.07, control of runoff from the minor property. It is understood that the vacant farmland on the east side of Falk Road is likely going to be developed into a mobile home park, Homestead Development, AKA miners' property. However, regardless of the current plans for the use of this land, its natural drainage pattern is likely to be utilized for control of stormwater runoff from any type of development on the site. At the present time, a substantial amount of the property drains into the culvert under Falk Road immediately east of Bray's Pond. Based on, based on the flows observed during the February thaw and during the heavier rainfalls this spring and summer, there's a substantial impact on the surface water regime on the landfill site. On the occasions when there's enough flow to fill the low area, south and southwest, east corner of the landfill site into the overflow of Bray's Pond, the excess water quickly raises to the level that goes into the south ponds and in the overflow through the ditch to the north pond, ultimately through the north outlet, which is Denise and Ruben's house. That's the big, the culvert that goes down there. This is all the Portland Moraine. It's kind of important property. I can't believe that this has been not caught before. It would be de serious, I'm sorry, de serious to completely eliminate the contribution from miners' property, but the law only limits the rate of runoff to the witches occurred, occurring prior to development, e.g. the agricultural runoff. So they're basically saying we can't evaluate it like that because it's still agricultural. Same reason that the, I made my three minutes.
Stacy, let me interrupt you for a minute.
Okay.
I want to make a motion that we extend your time an additional three minutes. I want to hear what you have to say, but I want to keep it fair for everybody. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Is there support?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Where was I? I probably lost a little bit. Okay, it is recommended that a series of options be explored to reduce the sudden increase of the flow rates that are now relatively common. First, it is to form the government bodies responsible for the site plan, review and approval of, of the desire to better control the flow of the water across the landfill site. Second, would be giving, I'm sorry, considerations should be given to working with the developers to construct a retention basin that would be more effective at restricting the discharge rate of the landfill. Third, it is not possible to better control the runoff from miners' property or is it adjacent retention pond structure of miners' property, consideration may be given to acquiring property on the west side of Falk. Who, who's going to buy that? And who's going to pay for it? And who's going to control it? And who's going to make sure that it's not polluted? There's a lot more to this report. In fact, I made a little bit of a summary on it and I'm going to go ahead and hand that to you guys. And I just, I, I'm going to put some pictures up and show you my daffodils flooding and I'm going to show you. But I have a garden, I mean, it's a big garden. It's huge, actually. Are my vegetables contaminated from the runoff? Denise has got a little golden retriever puppy that just replaced the one that just suddenly got sick. He was a frogger. He used to stand on the edge of the pond and just frog all day. That was his thing. He died. We actually talked to the vet about that. But she's got a brand new puppy. So when that pond thaws, when Rice Lake thaws this year, can her puppy play in that pond without her fearing for that puppy? I'll take my three minutes. I'm going to run now.
No, you're not done.
Okay.
I put you on pause because I had a question. I'm not charging you for that. Did she have an autopsy done on the dog?
No, she had it cremated and I actually was going to ask the vet to do some blood work before we actually put him down. They did some blood work just before and they did x-rays. I mean, she spent like $2,000. And it was very, very, and the vet said it's very possible, but obviously that kind of testing would be probably pretty extreme.
I, I just wanted to ask if that was done.
I, I almost asked her, but it was a very sad moment and
And then the report you were reading from was?
1994.
1994.
I handed, I've actually got two reports. So I did the 24-pager one the first time and now I delved into the 61-pager. And I know what kettles are now. I know, I'm actually getting a little bit educated on all of this kind of stuff. But this report needs to be revisited. It is the villagers' report and I'm sure you all have access to it. I, I made six or eight copies of it in the last couple of days. I have killed a couple more trees, but that report is going to be revisited by hopefully people that are able to be a little bit more clear with some of those state, they have initials after their name kind of thing. But I'm telling you guys, we need to be paying attention. I hope that this can all get done right. I hope that if, if the minor property is going to be developed into this kind of a park, that's fine. If I had started this and found nothing to validate my concerns, I would have not been at this meeting tonight. I'd be a bowling with my bowling people because we bowl in a bowling league for 25 years. But I'm telling you, there's a lot of information that needs to be evaluated. So I'm going to hand you these and I'm going to come with daffodil pictures next time. Thank you very much and
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was late, by the way, too. I was born nine weeks early, so I'm making it up five minutes at a time.
Sounds like Tony.
Anyone else for public comment? He get up first.
Bridgette Kinnaman, 433 North Saginaw Street. I'm here on behalf of the Holly Area Chamber of Commerce. This coming week, on Tuesday, the 26th, 7:00 p.m. at the Holly High School Auditorium, will be the State of the Community presentations. The township will be represented by George Cullis as supervisor. We have the village represented, the school district represented, as well as Rose, Groveland and Springfield townships. And I believe we have our state senator and our state representative there and we may have more. It is open to the public. Come and hear presentations. We encourage all elected officials to come and be a part as well and have your presence and be a part of this great evening. High School will also have
I was going to say, in addition to the boring people.
We will also have the high school band and Main Street Choir will be there as
As part of the program.
As part of the program, too.
You know, I, I'll just add to what you said. This is an opportunity for people in the community to come down, find out what's going on, see what we've been doing, see where we're going, see what the plans are. There's an afterglow. There's an opportunity for you to talk to people, ask questions. Last year, a lot of the people that were there were there for the first time. Part of the reason I invited the band of the reason I invited the band and the choir is cause I know that parents come with the kids, and those are our residents, and they came, and we had a lot of good, um, input at the end of the night.
Lot of good response from last year's event, so-
Time and date again.
Tuesday, uh, twenty-sixth, February twenty-sixth, seven P.M., Holly High School Auditorium.
Yep, out at the high school.
You said auditorium, sir?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Engelberg, I saw your hand up. Public comment.
Uh, Tony Engelberg, one one five Cogshell, um, couple of things, I, uh, in reference to the discussion tonight about the, um, assistant supervisor's position, I've done some research on my, on my own, um, in other areas of the community, some about the size of us, some bigger, some smaller. We are currently knowing, and especially knowing the responsibilities of that position just from what, from what I've observed, which I'm sure does not include everything, at thirty thousand dollars, we would have a very hard time keeping anybody who did not have direct and dedicated ties to this community. And it's, as I, as people have always said, it's not about the person, it's about the position, but in this kind of a situation, it's kind of both, because if we don't have a person like the person we have now, and we just had to go out and hire somebody from somewhere else, we would be a jumping off point to bigger and better things, rather than having somebody who is here because they want to be here and because they care about what is going on here. So, when you guys go through whatever you're gonna go through during the budget, ask yourself, who, what kind of person do we want in that position? Do we want somebody who's gonna be here for a year and fly off to the next big thing? Or do we want to have somebody who's going to be here because they have roots here, because they truly care about this community? And if the answer is the prior, I, I mean, I'm not gonna speak for the person who's here right now, and I wouldn't, I hope she doesn't go anywhere, but I wouldn't blame her. So, if the job is being done well and, and the responsibilities being what they are, let's just make sure we're actually paying an appropriate amount for the position, so that we have a good person in there now and going forward. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Laurie, it looked like you were getting up?
No.
Just adjust, just shifting?
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else for public comment? Okay, uh, none appearing? Before I adjourn, just let me, for clarification, Mark, did you, did you want to work together on this pay going forward, or did you wanna work separately and bring it at the, and when is the workshop?
It's usually in April.
Usually in April? We're supposed to get a presentation from parks in April as well?
Right.
Yeah.
Or March, isn't it March? So we can-
I know that change, I don't know if it-
It's supposed to be thirty days before the workshop.
Cause, uh-
Yeah. Or the previous, or-
All right, we'll have to check on that.
We wanna, we wanna be able to approve their budget.
Review and-
We wanted to have it for a month, then be able to ask questions.
And approve it in May, because June, that's crowd, then you end up in the situation like we did last year.
Right.
Where we basically approved their, the parks' budget, because failure to do so would may have resulted in the beach being closed on the Fourth of July.
Right, that's the problem we run into.
Right, we don't wanna run into that again.
Yep, okay. No other business appearing? I will close the meeting at seven twenty-six. I'm gonna put that on my desk. I picked up the pack at the end of the day.